Okay, well, it's nine o'clock. So we'll call this regular meeting of Commissioners Court to order here on the fifteenth day of October, nine o'clock here at the courthouse. Y'all rise for the invocation, brother Hurts.
First, let me say good morning to each of you. Let us all bow, please. Father God, as we come to you this morning, Father, we come acknowledging you as God. Come confess in Jesus Christ as our Lord and Savior. Come to say, Father God, thank you. Father, we thank you, Father, that we live in a country, Father, so we can have such meetings as these. Now, as I come to you, Father, on behalf of this judge, this Commissioners Court, Father God, these county officials, Father God, I come to you, Father, asking, Father, for your continuous grace, your continuous mercy, Father. We come, Father God, asking for your divine wisdom. On behalf of these county officials, we pray for the citizens of Talus County which they represent. Father, we pray, Father State, we pray for our nation, Father God, as our national motto is "In God We Trust." We pray, Father God, that you lead each person in a way that's pleasing to you. We pray for your divine protection over Talus County. Father, we ask that you lead us all and guide us, keep us all in your holy and divine will. These days we ask and we pray in Jesus Christ's precious name. Amen.
Thank you, brother. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one, public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Have anybody like to speak? Okay. Number two, presentation by City of Talco concerning completion and repair of the eight miles of road in Talco with possible action.
Thank y'all for what y'all done on the streets. They done a fantastic job. It look real good from the fourth. None of the city council, they're in a meeting in Texaco, so I'm filling in for them. So basically, what they're asking are, are y'all gonna be willing to continue? And if so, maybe get a timeline on it? And then there's one of the streets, I think Lawrence Street, it still got the dirt on it, hadn't been seal coated, and we've got some people there that are complaining of the dust. Because we haven't been blessed with much rain lately.
Absolutely.
So anyhow, all I'm gonna do is report back to the city council.
When we started that project over there, Nannette's not here today, I think it was around four hundred thousand, is that correct, guys? Do y'all know the total on that figure? I'm quoting a figure that I'm not real positive on that number.
I don't know.
But we've got about a hundred and, I think, a hundred and ninety thousand left. Is it a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety thousand? Left in that. When we come over there, we were just going to do the chip sealing, is all they were supposed to do. This is the four guys that did the work there and their crews. There's, I think there's some type of misunderstanding, we need to get with the city council over there. If they're gonna bring the roads up and have them ready, we could have chip sealed those roads in two or three days. But I think they got into a little more than, that's gonna let the commissioners speak upon that part of it and see, and need to get with Talco. If there's a hundred and eighty something thousand left there, I don't know if we can chip seal that this year or not. That's a question for these four gentlemen here. But then if you wanna get someone to do those roads, there's no ditches and stuff, the roads weren't pulled. Our understanding was that the roads would be all prepared, all we'd do is come in and chip seal those eight miles of roads, what my understanding was. Now, if I'm different on that, you commissioners, let me know.
I think it's what we passed in Commissioners Court to come in and chip seal the roads.
Right. The eight miles of road. So as far as how much is left there, we need to get with them. I don't know how much that one road that you're talking about is just the dirt. I'm assuming you're all the ones that built that up?
Uh-huh. It was just missed for some reason or another. I don't know why we missed it, but it was, that road was just missed when we chip sealed up there that day.
Does that one road conclude? I don't know how much more they're saying that's over there needs to be done, Hollis, so if they could get with us on that. There is some funds left there, there's not a lot of funds left there. What we give, these guys give their labor for free with all their crew, and so this has just gone from materials over there, and so we need to get with them. I don't have an answer for you when they could complete that, if that road is ready for that. I don't know how much hot weather we got left for y'all to do that. That's a commissioner question, so. Any idea?
With the weather getting like it is, I don't foresee being able to do it this, you know, this year.
Trouble is, it don't bond, you know, with this cold weather. Won't bond.
Maybe you can get with the city council and the preacher and all them and see.
Okay. Like I said, it's, good luck this week, there's highs, it's in the seventies, and there's one low in the thirties. I just don't think that, you know, the oil's not gonna set up very soon, unless you're gonna wait till eleven o'clock to try to do anything. But that, I don't know how much they got left, that one little small area they got were chip sealed. Because the lady called me and complaining because it was, kids were sick and red dirt was in their air conditioning ducts and all that, and I go over and look at it, see measures, see how much it is.
Possibility, if it does get warm enough in the next two weeks, we can get that part chip sealed, and then the rest of that balance that we did fund y'all over there, we could work with y'all on that as well, Hollis. If you get your contractor, whoever you want to do that part, like I said, they carried their crews, all four commissioners carried their crews over there, and weather permitting, Dana can look at that and see, and see how much road is left of that, and finish that one road that, I'm assuming that's the only road that you've got a problem with.
That's the only one that's still, that's the only one that's still got dirt on it.
The Lawrence Street and its law?
Lawrence.
Lawrence. We'll check on that this week and get you an answer back for that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hollis.
Number three, considering possibly approve the minutes from the September ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of the Commissioners Court?
Judge, so now I can check on number two.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the September ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of Commissioners Court minutes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number four, considering possibly approve the minutes from the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four special meeting of the Commissioners Court?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the September twenty-third, twenty-four special meeting Commissioners Court minutes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number five, considering possibly approve the fifth contract renewal with April scent Incorporated, the vendor that provides the statewide automated victim notice services, and that's the scans for the year beginning in September one, two thousand twenty-four. Contract that we have with the state, and they let us know about the victims, and they do all the reporting. This is something that we've done every year. The cost of this is six thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty cents, and this is the, be the fifth renewal of this contract that we've had with them. And this goes through the AG's office.
Make a motion, we approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number six, considering possibly approve the two thousand twenty-five Titus County Resolution for the Indigent Defense Grant Program. This is for our lawyers and stuff that we get with our grant money, for those that are, cannot afford a lawyer, an indigent defense department.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the two thousand twenty-five Titus County Resolution for Indigent Defense Grant?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number seven, considering possibly approve entering the service agreement with Val-Solve Corporation Incorporated for High Reach Technology for Mass Emergency Notification System, and the cost on that would be seventy-five hundred for a year, and that includes all of Titus County, up to thirty-two thousand in population. Jerry, you wanna speak on that?
Good morning. I'm here to ask you today to approve this contract with Harbor Reach. It's a mass emergency notification for the county. I've been looking at this program for quite a while now, and then in July of last year, or excuse me, this year, when Beryl come up through Titus County, we had multiple warnings, one right after another, after another, after another. So after that night, I come in, I'm like, we got to have something that will notify the citizens of Titus County. So back when I first started looking at this, the city and county was talking about splitting ways, and then I got a quote on it. Well, then, after we went back together, I found out that the first quote we had would not cover the citizens inside the city limits. So I talked with the judge, we decided this wasn't a good idea, so I went back, had him re-quote it for thirty-two thousand people. Is all thirty-two thousand gonna sign up for it? Probably not. But it's there for thirty-two thousand, the city, the county. Anybody passing through Titus County, it'll automatically alert their cell phone as long as they're inside the county. If they live like Mount Vernon, they work here in Titus, as long as they're in Titus County, they'll get the alerts, because only for Titus County. So in two thousand twenty-four, heat warnings, we had sixteen posted for Titus. The flood forecast was twenty-one. Flash flood warnings, eight. Severe thunderstorm watches, seven. Severe thunderstorm warnings, thirty-eight. Tornado watches, twelve. And tornado warnings, nine. And this was just for Titus County. Harbor Reach system is a very good system. I've sent over an email to the sheriff's office, and Mr. Livingston looked at it, researched it. He said this would be a good program, he thought would work good for the sheriff's office in Titus County to send out alerts. And y'all should have copies?
Copy, yes.
We can send out, it automatically does, it's set up with Shreveport and Noah Radio, it automatically does right off the bat, does your warnings, your watches for thunderstorms, tornadoes, anything like that, automatic flood. Now, with this program, we can actually go into it and send out evacuation alerts to anybody. It works off a TV, cellphone. Yesterday, some of y'all might got an Amber Alert on your TV screen, we can make it do that, too. Telephones, cell, tablets, Alexa, Siri, it does it all. It's however you set it up to do it. It's a free charge for these people to set it up. These people will give us a local phone number, they can call and set it up that way, and they can go on the computer and set it up, and they can do it on their cellphone. They put in what they wish to be notified on. Also, this program will allow us, a couple months ago, about three or four months ago, I guess, we had a man lost in Sugar Hill.
All right.
We could take this program, we get on scene, we pull up the mapping system, and then we could peg what area we think that he should be in. This guy was seventy-something years old, he took off on foot, he ain't gone far. We can actually peg this area out, and we can send a notification to this area within what we pegged. So it doesn't go to whole county. We can send it right there. A child lost at the lake, same way. We know he's a lion, let's say, Blodgett, Monticello area. We can peg it, we can send out information to only that area, not the whole county. Or we can send it out to the whole county. We can do whatever we want. Out at Jimmy's, when we had the storm that night, them people was trapped in their homes, roads closed, power lines down in trees. You know, as long as they're signed up on it, we can send out a notification to them. We have downed trees, we have power lines in them trees, roads are closed, stay home. And we can give them the information that they need. It's a real good program. The money, I put it back in my budget last year, and y'all approved it on this, but Ms. Nannette said that y'all would have to approve the contract. It's a seven thousand five hundred dollar a year contract.
Thank you, me and you talking about that, Jerry. It'll cover all of Titus County, not just the people in the county, but in all of Titus County, the city citizens as well.
City, the county.
And the main thing that we're gonna need to push on this is to make sure that people get signed up for it. And one of the other things that I did like about it, and speaking with Livingston over at the Sheriff's Department, if there's something comes up with the Sheriff's Department, Chris, and they'll need something there, we can ping that out through that, they get O T U, and get any messages we need out, as far as that goes as well.
Yes, companies even got a division in their company that will take our information and help us make the flyers to get passed out. Our Titus County Emergency Management Facebook page, we have three thousand six hundred and something people on it right now, and when we was posting all these warnings at night, there was multiple times, people come back and say, "Well, I've been on cities for I don't know how long, and I ain't got nothing in I don't know how long," asking me what the problem was. So I just kept kind of researching it till I found this. Now, the sheriff's office will put them in as, as long as it's all right, Chris and them, will put them in as a subcontract. Once they get set up in it, they can actually just send messages to their own people. It doesn't have to go to all the citizens, it doesn't have to go to the county, it doesn't have to go to me. They can just do their own people, say whatever they wanna tell them. It's a real good program, and I'd like for y'all to pass this, that we can go ahead and get started on this thing.
I think it's crucial for Titus County to have this. Like I said, the only problem that concerns me is I wanna make sure that we get these people signed up, because when we first started in with this, I got a lot of phone calls saying, "Well, I'm not getting, I didn't know about a tornado, I didn't know about this," and what getting those alerts. And the more that we notify, knowledge is power, and the more people that we do get notified in Titus County, it can help solve a lot of problems for us. And at the seventy-five hundred, we saved just a few lives here and there, that's well worth every penny of it, and covering the whole county is very important to us, the city and the county, and that way we've got everybody included in it, so.
Well, we put on radio, paper.
We do have a newspaper here today.
Facebook.
We'll get with her and try, we wanna get the word out on that, so that they can sign up. Another good thing that I did like about this system, you don't have to get on your computer to sign up, you can do it on the telephone, you can send your phone number that way, you don't have to be on the computer to get it done, so that helps some of our older people that don't wanna get on computers of that nature, give them some spots to be able to hear that. So I'm very much in favor of this, and like I said.
At the end of the first year, you know, we can sit down, we can look at it, okay, so we got, and it'll tell you this many people that live in the county, with their addresses is here, and this is how many is in the city. But it kind of varies, because a lot of people got post office boxes, which is gonna show a city address, but we can get a close idea at the end of the first year on where we're at.
Plus, we're not asking the city for any money on this, we're gonna take care of this as the county, because it will include everybody in Titus County, our citizens in the city limits and outside the city limits. So I really think it's a good program for us to consider. Thank you, Jerry. Do y'all got any questions for Jerry? Thank you, Jerry.
I make a motion, we approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve the service agreement with Val-Solve as our mass emergency notification system for seventy-five hundred dollars a year to include all of Titus County, the thirty-two thousand in population.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously as well. Number eight, considering possibly accept the award for rural law enforcement salary assistant program, which is a grant SB twenty-two for our county attorney's office, at the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, and in the sheriff's office for three hundred and fifty thousand as a matter of the record. Don't have to have an action on that, we just need to put that in. We've already got this grant again, everybody signed those. We have received that. So number nine, considering possibly accept the award of rural law enforcement salary assistant program, grant SB twenty-two.
Do you need to accept that?
It's a matter of record.
Just as a matter of record.
It's just a matter of record, eh? We accept it? Got a motion to accept that as a matter of record?
Make a motion, we accept it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman, a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number nine, considering possibly accept the award of the rural law enforcement salary assistant program, grant SB twenty-two for the district attorney, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand as a matter of record.
Make a motion, we accept it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to accept that grant for the one hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number ten, considering possibly approve the purchase of a two thousand twenty-four Ram thirty-five hundred truck from Elliott Auto Group, which I think that's EAG now, through the TIPS contract number two-two oh-three oh-four, for sixty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-five cents, and that will be for the Sugar Hill Fire Department, and that will be on a lease as well, like we've doing all the other trucks that we're doing now. Jerry?
Yeah, Sugar Hill was next in rotation for a truck, and the twenty-five models have gotten up so expensive right now. I mean, they're way above what we budgeted in for it. So I talked with Casey, and we did find a two thousand twenty-four Ram four-wheel drive with a bed on it, which it's in the figures.
Do y'all have a copy of this up there?
Yeah, sixty-one hundred for the bed, and then the grill guard was twelve ninety, so that kept us under the sixty-five thousand dollar budget. The truck will be leased out to Sugar Hill for one dollar a year, and then they have to put their equipment on top of it. Now, the judge and I talked about it the other day, is going forward, this will catch up the rotation, because we skipped a year when we were discussing the fire department. So this gets everything caught back up in the play. Going forward from now, we'll keep up with the VFDs, we'll figure, we'll see what they're doing yearly on runs, the people running, and it's, a lot of them agree with me, the chiefs do, that it's not fair to give a truck to a department when they're only making thirty and forty calls a year, when you got departments out here that's making one hundred and fifty, two hundred a year. They're the ones that's putting the miles on the trucks and wearing tear on the trucks. So come next year, if the funds are available, we'll sit down and we'll take a look at that and see who's making the runs and.
What me and Jerry talked about on that is, is to make sure, and with the new system, we'll be able to monitor that a little closer with the calls and who's making what calls, number-wise, and if we've got a department that's using a truck a whole lot more than the other department, it's not necessarily, the wear and tear is not necessarily on the others just because they're in a rotation. So it'd be more of an evaluation of each fire department each year, and then decide which, where the fire truck will go if we do, if we do purchase one each year. And that doesn't mean that we have to purchase one each year, but we'll look into each department, see what the needs are, and then go from there on out.
If the funds are available.
We've already purchased one for two thousand twenty-four, and this would be the purchase for two thousand twenty-five, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we're just doing it now. Okay.
Well, this is the new year.
Yeah, I know, it's our new financial year.
Right.
Okay. That's all I had.
I'm good.
Make a motion, we accept it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the purchase of the two thousand twenty-four Ram thirty-five hundred truck from EAG Auto Group.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number eleven, considering possibly approve the payment of indigent burial for nine hundred and fifty dollars. Reason this is in court today, this didn't have a family, or the JPs couldn't get ahold of a family. They did make the call for the funeral home to come out, and not being able to get ahold of a family and to find out if there is indigent, the JP sent that over and said it is indigent service, and so that's why it's on the.
What is the fee been in the past?
It's been nine fifty.
Nine fifty.
Hadn't gone up.
I make a motion to approve that.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve that.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number twelve, considering possibly approve the resolution for the Titus County Commissioners Court authorizing Commissioner Precinct One to undertake repairs to the parking lot of the Piny Baptist Church for voting box in precinct two. John Martin, you wanna speak on that? I know we've talked about it, make sure it was legal for us to be able to do that.
Yes, sir.
You might wanna get that microphone.
The church contacted us.
Jerry's a little tall.
You think? Just a little? The church contacted us about making some improvements to the parking lot. As the courts aware, we can't go onto private property and repair, but there's an exception in this scenario, because that's a voting booth, that's a voting area, and on the basis of it being a voting area, we don't need people getting out to vote and falling in a hole and breaking their ankle or whatever. And so I did some research on it, just to double-check, I even called TAC to make sure my thought process was correct, and they agreed. So what I think we need to do is, is make those repairs for that church parking lot, because we got early voting coming up just next week or something, it's coming up real fast on us, so.
Early vote will be down here, but that'll be election day there.
But the voting day will be around the corner.
Right.
So anyway, I think it's in the best interest of the county to fix that parking lot. We're not, we're gonna be using, could you speak on this, Commissioner, about what the process? We're not, we're using the leftover.
Reclaimed asphalt. I looked at the situation, it's not that bad, just got some dips in it where it holds water and whatnot, it wouldn't be a very big process to fix it.
You feel comfortable that we can get it done before the thirty days, so it'll be ready for election day?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So that's my recommendation, is we do that.
I just want you to speak on that, because there is some clarification there on what we can do, property owners, so that they know, they see us out there doing that, they think, "Well, we're doing it for everybody," but it is a voting place, and we did get it approved through TAC, so. Got a motion?
I make a motion to approve that repairs on the voting stations.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the repairs of the Piny parking lot for the voting precinct two box.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Upstate, don't mind. I'm gonna upstate for my vote on that.
Upstate?
I asked you to abstain from that. I asked to abstain from that. Purpose of that is since it's a precinct, if it's a precinct, I don't want to give any appearance with the election around, around the corner, I don't want to give any appearance that Commissioner Parchman was having any appearance. So that, it was my request to abstain.
Absolutely. Number 13, considering possibly approve the reestablishment of position of veteran's service office and to appoint Doug Powell to fill this position. Then we have Mrs. Ann Burton. Did she like to speak?
I hope everyone is doing well. I'm kind of the unusual one in the room. I've come here from Paris this morning, and the reason I am doing that is because as a veteran, working in Paris, assisting other veterans, I've had quite a number of people from Titus County and from Mount Pleasant that have come into my office seeking care. Now, normally, most counties try to have a service officer who's going to be available, and I know, according to the census, Titus County had about 1,400 veterans that self-identified on the last census, and those are self-identified. I say that because, believe it or not, a lot of people don't believe if you've served that you're a veteran unless you've served in combat, and I'm kind of an oddball in that arena as well. I'm a combat veteran. I served 24 years in the Navy. I was a healthcare administrator and retired in that capacity, and along the way, I also worked for the workforce center. So I know there are a lot of services here. The problem is, you don't have anyone who's helping to coordinate that for your citizenry. And when it comes down to it, those benefits they've earned through their service come back to the community because none of us can serve without a community behind us. And when you're thinking about it, a lot of times we think about disability compensation. Well, that's something that is a big deal because in this tight economy, an extra $200 can mean the difference between being able to get groceries and not. And your average veteran in this area, according to what they have here, is not receiving full monthly compensation for some of the disabilities I've seen come through. That tells me that it's not only not being captured, but you may have a lot of people who don't even know they're entitled. On top of that, you have surviving spouses and family members of people who have died as a result of their service-connected injuries. Agent Orange, unfortunately, was a terrible disgrace. It took until 1991 for any condition other than chloroacne to actually be recognized as being associated with Agent Orange, and in my personal experience, I've had spouses who lost their loved ones as far back as 2010 or 2015, who've only recently gotten compensation because there is a benefit called dependent indemnity compensation, which most of the surviving spouses are completely unaware that they may be eligible for. There's also a pension, so if someone's extremely low income, they can apply for that, either as a veteran who maybe has a day of active service that occurred during a period of war, but unfortunately, they've fallen on hard times, or as a surviving spouse whose loved one served during a period of war. And unfortunately, there are very few periods of peace that we can look back on. And I would urge you very strongly to do this reestablishment for your citizenry, not just the ones who are here now, but the ones who are serving are going to come back. When I looked at some of the things that are on the Census Bureau, I noticed that, for instance, people with disabilities in this area below 65 were 8.6% of the population. We have no idea how many of those may be veterans. And the median income was pretty high, but the per capita income was about $25,000, and believe it or not, that's right on the federal poverty guideline. I can't find a better reason than to just help your citizenry, to see about what you can do to increase their income so that they have the money to live, and you know most of that income's going to stay in the community. And those who want to buy houses, about 66% of the population here has their own home, but that means that you have over 30% who do not, and many times, that can seem out of reach. But the VA home loans have just recently changed, even include broker's fees, so it may be something that's available, not just for the veteran, but also the surviving spouses have that benefit too. And so I would urge you very strongly to get someone in the office who is going to be able to dedicate the time and energy necessary to not only become an accredited service officer, but to be able to do what's necessary to make sure veterans are not invisible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. And you talked about spouses having rights as well.
Yes, sir.
I've been visiting with Doug about this, and he's already starting to try to get updated on all of these things, something that I was unaware of, if those spouses remarry before the age of 55, they lose some of those benefits and things, which is...
They do.
It's kind of crazy for them.
Yes.
But anyway, Doug's already starting to get on top of that.
That's good.
We've got a school schedule for him for a week, and also, Mr. Coburn sitting beside him, Lieutenant Colonel, is that correct? He's in reserves, and he's going to be in his office, so we're not only going to get Doug, we're going to get two-for-one. We're going to get a lawyer that goes along with him and help us on that.
I hope that, and maybe down the road, there might be a veteran treatment court available in the area, as there is in the metroplex and some of the rural areas up north, because honestly, like I said, if we can give back, we can make all the difference. And the age 55 is for the federal benefits. If they remarry and they are getting the tax exemption in Texas, they lose that benefit altogether.
Right.
It's making sure they know what they can and can't do, and we're not trying to restrict people from doing it. We just want them to do it with wisdom.
Know what their benefits are and the causes of it, and like I said, Doug brought that to my attention earlier, and so there's a lot of things that we need to help our veterans. Our veterans all gave some, and we need to give back to them as much as we can here in Titus County.
Absolutely, and frankly, with the indigent burials, that's something I've dealt with in the Paris area. Something to keep in mind is the spouses have a burial benefit as well, and it's often overlooked. We've had something in the American Legion called Missing in America that has allowed to identify veterans or their spouses who literally were cremated and left on a shelf for up to 90 years. We can make sure they're honored appropriately.
Proper burial, for sure. We appreciate you driving over, Ms. Amy, and Doug may be hollering at you some as well.
Not a problem. My clear village.
We appreciate all your help. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to make the motion that we reinstate our veteran service officer and appoint Doug Powell to fill that position.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 14, considering discussing the subject, budgeting the proportion of designated funds for road materials to each precinct based on road mileage in each precinct with possible accident.
You know, we, we look at this and everything and just trying to figure out the best way to do it, and nothing for precinct one or precinct, against precinct one, precinct two is, but you know, we, I've have a lot of, we spent already $50,000 on material since the first of the month, trying to get these roads picked up and fixed up and everything. And we're, right now, we're on 30, 45, and it's going to be about seven tenths to a mile to chip seal it. We chip sealed part on 33, 33, 30, about four tenths of a mile, and so this is what I'm just asking, do you know, we do it where we get the money where it's equal to everybody?
Well, I think there's another way to do it. Like, y'all know how I feel about this already. I mean, it's going to hurt me and Joe D on this, and I still think that we should be able to pull from general funds to help you to get your roads where they need to be instead of crippling precinct one and precinct two.
Said precinct three's already crippled.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but I'm just, I want to be able to pull a bigger portion.
Precinct four, I mean, yeah, Jimmy has the same amount of road as you do. Jimmy, how's your road money and all that?
Well, right now, my money is fairly good because I didn't get to do any chip sealing this year. That's the only thing.
Do you have enough to go around in your precinct, the same amount of road as his?
Do...
Do you have enough money every year to do that?
It's close sometimes, real close.
Well, it's close in mine, and you know, I'm not willing to give up any, anything out of my precinct that, I mean, because it's my precinct, and it takes every bit. I got to maintain it, so I know he hurts for money because he's got more road than I do, but I'm not willing to...
We scabbed the road last week. It was just a little over a mile, and I put a little over $40,000 in that debt.
It's unbelievable, the oil cost and stuff. If it's got oil in it, it's just, the cost is unbelievable. It's just, everything's so high.
Yeah. Yeah, when you're paying 100 and 105, 103, no, it went up to 105 dollars for oil sand a ton, it, it's expensive real quick.
Yeah.
Four loads is $10,000. Almost 11.
Yeah.
But I just need to, you know, figure a way to, you know, help precinct three out with that.
Well, how much money, I mean, do you really, do you think it would take right now to get your roads pretty much for the...
That's, that's, I don't know. It's, I've got a bunch that, you know, got to chip seal and redo and all that, you know.
But I think we should be able to, like, if you need 100,000, whatever it may be, we should be able to pull it out of general fund, somebody, we got the money there to do it, so might as well use some of it if we need to, to help you out.
Are you going to pull it out of general fund every year?
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying, you need to be able to get, pull enough out to get your roads where they need to be, then you can use the money that you get out of your budget to maintain. That's what I'm saying, get a big portion of it and do all your roads at one time, if you can do that.
Only thing, Titus County is, this is the way it's been set up for, forever, I guess. I mean, each, we've split it up and helped each other and worked together and everything, but it does take a lot in road material, I understand that, but you know, I mean, take it away from ours because, I mean, I'll stretch to the limit every, every year, go down to the last spending, but...
And my account wouldn't look like it is right now, but what, for the arper funds and me selling assets that I, that I had, so that's, that's why mine looks like it is, but it will be depleted, because I mean, I still got a lot of work to do with mine as well.
Like I said, it was, at one time, it was, was by the, paid about by the mileage, and it just, for some reason, it went away. And I talked to a few commissioners, and when they was here, that's why they did it. It was, you got so much then, and after that, you got percentage of road mileage for money and everything wasn't ever equal. But I got, you know, I got to fight for my precinct, just like y'all do.
We understand that, yeah.
No, regardless of how the outcome, it, you know...
Could you get us a total, maybe, how many, how many miles of road that, I know you've got some that may be better than others, a figure where that, I'm assuming that if you've got that much road, you're going to need to, if we did put some money aside over there, I don't think you could do it all with just your road hands either. You'd have to maybe subcontract a contractor to come in and build those roads up, and then after that, get them to where you're just chip sealing and maintaining.
Yeah, let's see, most times, you know, I've been not, hadn't been able to chip seal but one time over them, and you know, it takes, you know, to keep it good, look like maybe have to do it twice to make it stay, you know, and I hadn't been able to afford to do that, you know. One time is all I've got, you know.
That's all I have, one time.
Until, until you get a dollar figure, I think if you could get a dollar figure, I don't know, I can't speak for everybody, but until you get a dollar figure, we don't know exactly how much, what percentage. I know what you're saying is on the miles, and...
Right.
And I can, I can see where you're coming from on that, and I see where Jeff comes on his, so until you have a figure...
Yeah. You know, and that made this here way back, back in August, where the, how much it would affect the, each precinct, and so, you know, like, it'd affect precinct one about 132,000 and precinct two about 38,000.
But like I said, even if it affects them, if it affects Jeff 100,000 and Joe D 30,000, that's 150,000. Is that going to take care of your roads 150,000?
One time? Maybe, I don't know.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So if we can get more of a figure towards that, then we kind of know what we do need to take to put to that, to get your roads to maybe where, where you can survive with your budget like that.
But, you know...
Well, you know, Jimmy's got a ton of roads. If you give to one, you got to give to the other.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
That's up to y'all. Y'all four are the ones who got to work the roads together, so...
We work good as a, I mean, we all work together. We help each other out and stuff like that. This is something that's got to be figured out before we vote, the way I look at it.
Because it's, every day, it's getting worse and worse every day on mine. You know, like I said, we, right there, right now, we got eight loads coming to where Sugar Hill, trying to get that over 30, 1915, 1910, take care of everything, and it just takes everything I got.
With the, with the weather coming in the way it is, is that what y'all say, we're going, we're not going to be able to chip seal for a while, maybe until the spring?
Road works about over, it's just patching and...
Patching and, and maybe a little scabbing, and the scabbing's just better with too because you, that stuff just walks with you. If you put it on, that road's cold.
Right.
It just walks with you. You can't get it packed in, it won't stay. You're just throwing money away by doing it that way. So it's mostly from here, from here till early spring, it's, it's pretty much just patching.
So basically, what we need to do is, if we are going to do it, I mean, there's nothing you can do right now with it. Anyway, if we're giving the money, he couldn't do the roads. Is that, is that what I'm hearing right, or don't?
You know, I got, you know, there's a couple of weeks that we can do, whether, you know, as long as the weather don't get below 30, you know, but, but it's going to have to warm up a little because, look, the weather, I looked at next two weeks, 70 and 80 to the temperature and everything, so we, we're out trying to get something done.
So we might be able to get that over there, chip sealed as well?
Right.
But what did y'all decide to do with, with that excess money that y'all were going to get part of the other day?
We had to spend it.
I offered...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I offered it to, to him, and he said he was okay.
Right, right at the time. But like I said, it's, I hate taking money from, you know, a different, I appreciate it, I do appreciate it, it's just that, you know, if something happens, you know, well, I want my money back, you know, that's, I don't, you know, that's the deal, you know. I understand that tremendous, but I just think that, you know, we've got to do something now or we will never get done. We done put table this twice, and, you know, I just can't just keep bringing it to court. We got, we got to do something now. I make a motion we do the, by the mileage.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite funded by the road mileage for each precinct.
I'll second.
Got a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I don't work on these roads with y'all, and so if you can get me a number, I can't vote on something without a number, just to move that and decide which house is going to hurt every precinct, but, so if we can get a number, then maybe we can bring it back up. So number 15, we considering possibly approve posting the speed limit on County Road 1170 at 25 miles an hour. Jeff, is it?
This, this is a road that goes...
It's in yours.
It's in my precinct, but this is just a real short road. It's about 400 yards long, and they, they come off the main road flying because it goes, the main road goes this way, and then this is a short road. It's north of Winfield there, and there's a bunch of kids that play and stuff in there, and they fixing to hit a major highway, and I need to slow them down for the kids especially.
Sheriff Bragg, as long as we post a sign, there's got to be a sign posted before you can do anything. Is that correct as well?
Yes, sir. So we go, put it on the board, sign's posted.
Sign's posted before you can do anything.
I have the signs, and as soon as we approve this, well, there'll be a...
I've got, I've got something else on that too, that I found out that I didn't know. We, at one time, we were out of the black lettering for our, that we put on our signs, and we've got some that have got red lettering on, and Chris might can attest to this, but I was told by highway patrol that they would not enforce anything unless it was black lettering on the signs, so need to make sure that everything's black lettering on the signs.
Yeah, these are, these are store-bought signs.
Oh, they got to be, the lettering's got to be...
I didn't take no spray paint in that 25.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So yours are black, so we're good to go there with the writing?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve this.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the County Road 1170 25 mile an hour speed limit.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve this.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the County Road 1170 25 mile an hour speed limit.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parksman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Number 16, considering possibly approve the holidays for the 2025 calendar year.
I make a motion to approve the holidays for 2025.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the holidays for 2025. Y'all all got a copy of those?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parksman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 17, is considering possibly approve the Commissioners' Court schedule for the 2025 year. As you note there, May the 27th will be a Tuesday, and October the 14th will also be a Tuesday. All the others will be our Monday, the second and fourth Mondays as, as normal in our calendar year.
Make a motion to approve them.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve those.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 18, approve oral and written reports from the county officials.
Make a motion to approve them.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parksman to approve the oral and written reports of the county officials.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carried unanimously. Number 19, considering possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
I make a motion to accept the treasury report.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to accept the treasurer's report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parksman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 20, approve the budget amendments. Ms. Land, did you want to speak on that?
She has two on here. 2025-01, this to transfer training and runs for the VFDs to Department 541.
Yes, ma'am.
The next one's line item transfer for cell phone for the shared department. And then 2025-02, budget with the ESO officer. And then two is to budget insurance for SB 22 funds for the Assistant Investigator. She says, I don't have any questions. We can call.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the budget amendments. Second by Commissioner Parksman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carried unanimously. Number 21, sign pay orders and approve our payments.
Make a motion to pay a bill.
Motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve the payments. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carried unanimously. Number 22, closing comments?